Call the meeting to order, Madam President, call the road police.
Mr. Buckner?
Here.
Reverend Campbell?
Here.
Mr. Hood?
Here.
Mayor Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mayo?
Vice Mayor Miller?
Here.
Mr. Saunders?
Here.
Mr. Vogler?
Here.
Mr. Whittle?
Here.
We have our invocation by Lee Vogler, followed by a pledge of allegiance, I say everyone to please stand.
Bow our heads. Lord, we come to you tonight in prayer, prayer for our city, prayer for all of those across our city, our region, and our Commonwealth and our country, but especially tonight, Lord, we come to you in prayer for the children of our city, the next generation. Lord, we pray for wisdom, vision, and courage for those in leadership charged with shepherding these children's future, for there is no greater task than that one. Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to say good evening to those of you who are here in the chamber and those of you who are viewing us by River City or Facebook, as you notice, our city manager is, I'm sure he's viewing, but he's at Harvard, and our Councilman Mayo is on vacation, traveling. We have, under our announcements, special presentation by our superintendent, Dr. Harrison, good evening to you, and I see two of the school board members are here as well, so, Dr. Harrison, good evening. Dr. Harrison comes with her own IT.
Thank you, Mayor Jones, and members of council, and thank you, Mr. Rogers, Mr. Whitfield, thank you, and I want to acknowledge our two board members, Mr. Taquan Graves and Mr. Tyrell Payne, they actually were at an education conference today and hurried back so they could be here, so I do thank them for being here. I wanted to, again, thank you all again, it sounds like I'm full of thanks, but I am very thankful that you all are allowing us, me, an opportunity to present the updates on our capital projects. We will be coming back in September for discussion on approval of an interim contract for, to proceed with construction, and I'll explain your folders later, I just wanted to get those to you, but I will start with non-bond projects. So there are some projects that we are working on that are non-bond related, and I did want to catch you up. I first wanted to catch you up on the track, we know this has been a long, long time coming, and there's great progress being made. We did find some major sink holes that had to be addressed, if you look on the screen to the upper left, there's an underground retention pond that is going to help us keep the water off of our track. The curbing has gone in, and there's some major, major work going on down there, so we expect this to be significantly finished at this time because of some delays by the first of October. You'll see the first round of concrete, of rubberized track going down, so we're very excited about the work, we monitor on a regular basis, and we know that that's going to be exciting for the community. Other non-bond related work was our track repaired under our FEMA, the FEMA dollars were used to repair our Langston track. We scored that off, marked it off, and it's well in use, we have some water retention issues down on the left side of, or right side of the field that we're working through, but it is in very, very good shape, the hill area up by the, the school there. Our sacred hearts, we appreciate adult attention helping us keep that clear, and we need to do a little bit better job there, but we certainly are excited about the track being accessible to the community. The next non-bond capital project that I did want to catch you up on is the Virtual Academy. We used our ARP funds, our ESTR dollars to ensure that we had room for teachers, and we could renovate Taylor with new roofing, new HVAC, paint, and getting the school in good shape for our Virtual Academy, which continues to be there to serve students. We also envision part of this school being used for swing space if needed with our GW renovations. The area you see there with the help desk, that is our help desk area, parents have Chromebooks and all types of technology issues at home, and they are always there to help us with that, and this is our new area, see Ms. Cunningham here with us today, so hopefully she appreciates this new area for checking into the Virtual Academy as well as providing a meeting space for our children in the lower right. OT Bonner, the bleachers at OT Bonner in the gymnasium were just simply unsafe, not accessible, handicap accessible, and so we finished painting OT Bonner, and the bleachers should be here within the month, and that school is a non-bond project, and we felt good about painting the entire school, OT Bonner has been with us for quite some time and needed just an uplift. At OT Bonner, we have lots and lots of community programs, community programs that are, that use our auditorium, whether they be entertainment, some of the churches, speakers, and we know that the seating in there had grown unsafe, and so we are in the process of refinishing that seating area and moving forward with that. Forest Hills Elementary, as soon as I arrived, asked for a new paint job, and so we've been able to get in there and paint the school, as well as repair the roof on, near the auditorium, that's where we really had problems, was the auditorium area, so we've been able to take care of those, so those were non-bond projects. Relative to our 1% sales tax and our bond, Dewberry is the architect of, that the school board approved to move forward with the design of Langston, they're moving along very well with the design of the Langston campus with some adjustments. You will see some movement there in February with us placing an RP out for the contractor who will be handling that work. The track, let's start with the track on the left side, the lighting will be moved off the field, there will be some impressive work done there to make that track ready for competition. Toward the right, the gymnasium and classrooms again will be used for Galileo, with the central office using the F building. We don't really see a need to build a new administrative building, but maybe an attachment for some offices and board meeting space, so that will save us some dollars on the Langston campus, so we're very excited about moving forward with that project. Excited that we had a good turnout, we know that Langston is coming forward, but we had a really good turnout for our contractor expo. Thank you, Dr. Campbell, for attending the expo, that particular opportunity served our local contractors with an opportunity to ask questions from possible larger contractors, and to learn more about what they needed to do to prepare to participate in this great opportunity. So where are we on the two major projects, Johnson PPEA and George Washington High School, in addition to Langston? I wanted to provide just an overview of timeline because we have been moving quickly, as soon as the bond work, the bond passed, we started moving with, ensuring that we had proper guidelines in place, we had proper pre-bid meetings, met with various ones, interviewed, and conducted meetings to ensure that we dealt with proposals appropriately. The Johnson PPEA, the school board approved branch bills, construction, and Dewberry to move forward with the design, the detailed design, and with George Washington High School, it was English Blair and RMM architects would be moving forward with the detailed design. Before we move into any kind of work or contractual payment, we will be back to you with, working with Mr. Whitfield, to be sure we come back to you for the proper levels of approval. And so, between July 15th and August 4th, we work, we will be working on refining the conceptual designs for these two areas, and I want to go back to, again, this whole process was guided and, and led by some experts in this particular field of work. We will have a public hearing on August 4th at the school board, and this public hearing will be for anyone to come and to share ideas about the work that's going forward, and we will then begin, continue to work with the proposer that I mentioned, branch bills, English Blair, and RMM will detail phases, and then we'll begin to execute agreements in September with contracts being assigned in September. And under the PPEA, the contractor's working closely with the architect, so it does help us with time, and with the bond, we'll remember that there's a three-year window of time to use those dollars because they are tax-exempt dollars. So Johnson Elementary, Y Johnson, we knew that we could expand securing any kind of property because that school would go on the, the existing properties, so the site, the site work would be expedited because we already have the property. We also knew that as we go into our other projects, we definitely need swing space, Taylor can handle some swing space, but we know we will need swing space, so the quicker we can move on Johnson Elementary, the better off we'll be with swing space and having opportunities for other schools as well. George Washington, you've probably seen this rendering quite a bit, and we do plan to execute this project with kids on site during most of our demolition work in the summer, and certainly moving that front office to the front area, and you'll see more and hear more about this. So what are we looking at relative to dollars, 127 million in bonds, we used 8 million of our ARP, and this was a different process for education, we needed to get permission from the superintendent of education from the state. State and local capital dollars of 5 million, grants, 1.5, we received an HVAC grant of 1.5 million dollars, for total of 141.5 million dollars going into our community to upgrade our schools and do good work in our schools. So the next steps will be that we will meet with staff, parents, and community members for our in-person sessions, and we did the same process, or had the same process for George Washington, Langston, and Galileo, as well as Johnson. We'll meet with our parents of these four elementary schools, because again, our commitment is to get our children out of mobile units and into classrooms. We will have a very refined process of surveying our parents, asking what kinds of things do they see, for example, we know at Forest Hills, we need to look at the cafeteria, we need to look at external classrooms, Park Avenue, cafeteria, external classrooms, Woodbury really needs an entire lift there, and so forth and so on. In April, we will come back to the community with feedback on some possible design work, we'll move out, to put our bids out for architects and begin the design work. Ultimately, as we work on these projects, we are planning on a 10-year facilitated program of facilities, things that need to be renovated, maintained, and new construction probably, so that we're not going, it was not a hit or miss, it's well organized as we move forward. I wanted to again present this information to you, it's exciting for our school district, lots of things are happening with our school district, and this is one of the most exciting opportunities of my lifetime, and I know some others as well, so I thank you, and are there any questions?
Well, Dr. Harrison, let me first of all, thank you for taking the time to share the capital updates with the citizens of Danville City Council, just want to share, you and I personally only had a conversation once in regards to the budget, just want to share just a concern in how we can help. I think many people know that in June 2004, and I think I can add a little bit more clarity to the community in regards to council's role. In 2000, June 2004, I was appointed to the school board by city council, this young man to my right, Councilman Saunders, was one of the council members who appointed me, at that time in 2004, they had an appointed school board. It's a lot of conversation about what does city council do in regards to the school system, and in 2006, and I can speak on this from personal experience, in 2006, citizens in this community decided that they wanted to go to an elected school board. So from 2004, Clark, Whitfield sitting there, came out, Dr. Bohemus, Dr. Huckabee, and myself, they decided that, put our names in a hat, the person's name that come out of the hat would be the person that's running for an elected school board, which the citizens decided to do that in 2006. Lo and behold, my name came out, I ran for city council, for school board in 2006, that's when it was an elected school board. Councilman Saunders, who is sitting here, and I watched the last school board meeting, and I sincerely applaud your transparency in addressing all the many concerns that have not only been floating around in the community, the miscommunication, but I have personally received emails from employees who recently resigned from Danville Public Schools. I want to take this opportunity to pause and say thank you to Tyrell Payne, because what we try to do as a council is follow protocol, and every time I get those calls, and I send them to Tyrell. So here's my, where we all could possibly help, I gave all that information for a reason. In order to keep the momentum going and moving in our educational system forward, persons oftentimes said, city council, city council, city council, it was the citizens in this community who decided to go to an elected school board. Those are elected officials on the school board, yes, city council supplies funding, here is where I think persons do not understand this council and why we wanted to get our funding. Councilman Saunders and the members of that city council, if you listen to the litany of the time that I gave, 2004 and beyond, before that, that city council had all kinds of hands-on, hands-in to the school system. I'm privy to that because I was a member of the appointed school board, we've reported everything to council, we dotted every, I crossed every T, that no longer exists anymore, but we have a member who was a part of that, who understands how all of that worked, and he asks the questions that he asks, and he has been doing that for years. So persons ask the question, and Dr. Harrison, I'm commending you, but I'm trying to figure out, here is what I want to figure out as a council while you stand before us, and again, I commend you. How do we strategically plan together, a ways to shift the morale of the employees of Danville Public Schools? We understand you have, you have put in places incentives of retaining teachers, but the new school year is rapidly approaching. It would be great hearing about the kickoff and how teachers and other staff will walk away excited and looking to our young people entering the buildings. Now, I wrote all of this down for a reason, this council sat down in a retreat, and this, Dr. Harrison, I'm sorry that you may not be privy to this because you were not here, this is how we came up with our three strategic goals. We sat down in a conference and a retreat for several days, and we heard from the citizens in this community, and the citizens in this community were told there were no gangs in Danville, Virginia. This young man is sitting beside me now, Councilman Vogler, was irate, am I correct, because there were gangs in Danville.
I did not tell you that.
No, you didn't tell us that, you didn't, once again, Dr. Harrison was not here, once again, Dr. Harrison was here, and this is my point, we, as a council, sat down and came up with three strategic goals, to reduce violent crime, to support education, and to grow Danville. To fast-forward it, Dr. Harrison, it was my idea presented to council that we move education as our number-one priority because our crime was down to a 30-year low, and we moved education to our number-one priority, and this council said yes. My, we've asked several times, what can we do, how can we help, how can we change the morale? With everything that you're doing, everything that you're trying to do and wanting to do, the thing that I, I think that is really, how can we wrap our hands is, is morale. So I present to you, I know I didn't mean to catch you off-guard, but one of the things that happens with council is, this council is very active and very engaged, and what happens is, when we ask questions, persons feel like we throwing people under the bus. But if you look at, when Caesar's came to this community, we put together, along with our city manager, a committee of persons from the community, from the community, and we asked the persons in this community, what was their priority, and they said education, and we listened. So I present to you, 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 I sincerely, my heart goes out to you, it really does, because you have to present to council, and you got to present to a board, our city manager presents to council, he don't have to present to the school board, but the citizens in this community elected to go to an elected school board, but yet they're asking, council, why aren't you doing something? My, present to you, I'm asking you now to think about, because you say you're coming back in September, and I hope we can get together before September, and I want to sincerely apologize from Alonzo to the superintendent, because I've only met with you one time in regards to the budget, and it's because I respect the protocol of the board, but that's got to change. We have got to work together to change this, and I promise you to this day, it's changing on my part, because I'm going to become more engaged with you because you can't do it all. There was a youth forum last night, and I listened to those young people last night, and it was an excellent youth forum, and my heart went out to the young people. But you, as the leader, are being, I know how it feels, because everything is being targeted and thrown at you, and this was not created overnight. So I say to you, I thank you for your presentation, but we have got to do something together as a council, as a division, to change the morale of the people, because we can't get to where we need to get if we don't have people on board that's pushing where we're trying to go. And right now, in my opinion, which probably don't mean much from all the phone calls I've gotten and all the texts I've gotten, I don't really think we have a lot of people on board to help us to get where we need to do, get, so whatever council can do, and I'm asking you, and I'm not asking you to answer this right now.
Well, I'd like to comment.
Oh, please, please, please.
So what I would say is that our district, as you know, is the last performing district in the state, and that did not occur overnight, it occurred over five or six years, it really did. Our district did not fall in disrepair overnight, it won't fall into where we want it to be overnight, but I am confident, and I put in your folders our school climate survey, because I want us to be really clear about how people are feeling. I attended a responsive classroom training last week, and I can tell you that was excitement and energy beyond approach. If you attended our graduation, which I think you did?
Yes.
You had the valedictorian and the salutatorian say two things, they said, we're tired of people bad-mouthing our school, we love our school, and when you have the valedictorian and salutatorian saying that we love our school, that means a lot. So I think that what we have to do is, we have to take some time to hear some voices that may not be so ready to get on Facebook or do all of those things and speak negatively of, and what's interesting is that some people don't even live in our city, and they're commenting about our schools. And so I believe in looking at our staffing, and yes, we had people resign, but you know, our expectations are much higher, I put in the, in your folder, the corrective action plan, the corrective action plan is significant, it's a lot of work, and at some point, we have to fight for our children. And so our schools that are fully staffed, the Northside Preschool, Grove Park, Forest Hills, Taylor, Park Avenue, Galileo, and WW Moore, and the school with the greatest number of vacancies is Gibson with four, and School Field with four, but the others have one and two vacancies. And so we fully expect an energy this year that we have not seen before, and at some point, we have to help our children realize, gosh, we just had 68% of the voters pass a 1% sales tax, and if you think about it, Mayor Jones, it was on the back of a ballot, they had to vote twice.
That's right.
So there's belief out there in our children, and I just wish everyone would believe in our children, and so this is not about adults, this is about our children, children who may be in the 10th grade and cannot read past the 6th and 7th grade, that's who we're fighting for. And so the next time people come to me and they ask, you know, they go on and on and on about themselves, what I have to ask is, what exactly are we doing for our children? I had a phenomenal meeting with Parks and Recreation and the library director, looking at things that we need to do for children outside of school, having activities. We have a wonderful opportunity that every child can go to the public library and collect a book, several books, and, and don't have to have a card, their name's already in the system. There are great things that we have going on in our district, when you see our test scores and how we've increased, and I can't share those right now, but when I share them with the board members, their mouths dropped, because our kids performed this year, they performed. And so unfortunately, what happens is that we can't share that information until it's time to share it, our graduation rate is a challenge because we start in 9th grade, and four years ago, had we started tracking our graduation rate, it would be where it needs to be. So make no mistake about it, Mayor Jones and Councilman, you're going to see a significant gain from our children, you're going to see schools that scored level one in the accreditation process that's never been past level three.
I did a commercial, I did a commercial.
And I can't wait, I can't wait to share, because what happens oftentimes when you're going through massive change, people, the only person that likes change is a baby, a wet baby. And so at some point, we as a community have to come around our children, because I cannot imagine as a child, sitting there and listening to the negativity about our schools when kids are working their behinds off, so that's where I am.
Thank you, there's a, recently, one of your, some of your staff members came to me in this chamber, and we did a commercial or promotion for Five on Five with absenteeism, if there's anything that you need us to do in regards to morale, a video, what we'll do, Councilman Campbell?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Dr. Harrison, for the words that we expressed here tonight, behalf of Councilman Wood, myself, we were in a session for the first time with you, and we saw the capital improvement. Mr. Mayor, I appreciate the words that you spoke tonight, because that is the sentiments of our community, where our schools are and where it is going, and where we are right now, I personally feel that is not the best statement about the citizens of Danville and our kids, and personally, I have made this one of my pet peeves to do all that we can. And sometimes it takes bad news to make people aware to bring good news, and I just believe that it takes a community with all of the tools that are available. We need grandparents, grandpas, fathers, mothers to be aware of our children, I just can't accept personally that we're 132.
I agree.
I agree that, I see us being number one, and I just feel that if we put our hands together, put our minds together, we can make a difference in our community, and I just appreciate, you know, we're not casting judgment, all I'm saying is, we can do it, I know we can do it. You know, we're Danvillians, we're an all-American city, and we have conquered many things, and we are not, we are not going to allow our school system to stay where it is, and personally, all that I can do, and all that we can try to move forward, you have me 100%.
Councilman Vogler?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Harrison, and first to kind of echo what somewhat was said earlier too, I feel somewhat bad in that, in the sense that you're coming into a situation that is, in some cases, years of kind of built-up frustration or questions or concerns, and, and you're kind of inheriting that, so to speak. One of the things that I think has really hurt our schools over the last 10 years is just a, a lack of continuity, I think, if my math is correct, you're the fifth superintendent in the 10 years that I've been here on council, I mean, that is, that's an astounding stat in and of itself. And there are kids in our school system that have had probably a different principal each- each year that they've been out of school. It is incredibly hard to build success with that much turnover. And so I am really hopeful that the beginning of that continuity is underway. And I think it's important, as has been said, that we address the issues that we're having and have had, and how do we work to improve those? Don't sweep things under the rug, but at the same time, talk about our successes and talk more about the good things. I'm glad you mentioned that about the students who say that they're tired of hearing about the bad things about it. Because there are great teachers, and there are wonderful students. Our students are great. And the thing that has kind of bugged me at times over the years is that sometimes in the past, it seems to me that the school system was almost afraid to talk about the successes of some of the schools, because, well, it was a notion of, if we talk about that, then it will make the other schools feel bad or something. No, we should want all of our schools to be extraordinary. And the ones who are getting recognized for things, great, that should be the model for all of our schools, instead of saying, well, we don't want to talk about that one too much because the other one. No, let's talk about the ones that are doing great, and let's figure out how to get all of our schools there. So I'm glad to hear that, that that might be the case moving forward. And I'll close with this, Mayor. As the mayor said, council, we had three strategic goals, which was to reduce crime, to grow Danville, and to improve education in our city. And I think the frustration on council's side of it is that, of the three, the only one that we haven't really been able to see significant improvement with in the time since we set those goals is the school system. And it's the only one of the three that we're really not directly involved with. But yet, citizens ask us all the time, can't you do something? What are you doing? Why don't you do more? And so, I'm paraphrasing, but if I heard you right earlier, and I'm with you, protocol be damned, I think council has to get more involved.
That's right.
And I'm dedicated and committed to doing that, and I know we all are. I think it is, it is time for us to stop worrying about stepping on toes and saying, well, that's maybe not necessarily the traditional approach. These aren't traditional times. These are important times for our kids. And so we need to be arm in arm with the school system, with you and the school board and everybody, and stop worrying about procedure and, well, we do this, that, and the other. We're ready to get in the trenches and do what we got to do to help. And I think our young people deserve nothing less. And again, I know you're coming into this, so please don't take this as being directed at you. But what I'm saying is that we're ready to help. We're ready to help.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anyone else with Dr. Harris, Dr. Miller?
You know, when we set our priorities, we realized that we had our three priorities, but at the bottom of the pyramid is education. Our economic development is vitally dependent on our school system. We have so many businesses that come to look, and individual families that come to look at our school system. You know, the first thing a family does when they want to move here is, how good's the school system? And in the past, we've had, we've lost many prospects and families and businesses, people at the hospital come in, look at the schools, and don't come because of the school system. So it's vitally dependent, we have a good school system. And I really like, you know, when they look at, the first thing they see is, is the physical plant. When you're looking at a community, look and see, you know, when we've had schools that were rundown, roofs leaking, HVAC systems failing, and when you see that, I don't want my kid going there. And that's what we hear, and they don't come here. So it's just wonderful to see all these projects and how we're making our schools look so much better. It's a better learning atmosphere when a school is, looks new and is well taken care of. So I'm just really excited about all these projects you've presented. And the other thing I think we forget is, you know, there's been complaint about all the teachers that are leaving. Well, you showed us a few months ago that there weren't that many, in relation to other years, hell, three or four years ago, the numbers of teachers that left, there was just a delusion of teachers that left our system, long before you got here. And the numbers I see now don't even come close to that. So this is, you know, sometimes people complain, and squeaky wheel gets the grease, I guess, but the numbers that I've seen don't show the massive migration of teachers away.
Well, Dr. Miller, Dr. Wee, we did have a significant migration out of the district this time, but again, we've been able to hire staff, and we feel good about the folks we're hiring, not to discount retention. We hired Dr. Haynesworth to work on a project of teacher retention. But what I will say is that, speaking of principals, I had a great principal almost quit in July because of the negativity. She said, I just can't take the negativity. I work too many hours. And so I think that what we have to really start to do is highlight the positive things. We had an event at Pleasant, Pleasant Hill, right?
Pleasant View.
Pleasant View today. It was amazing to be out there and to provide support for children with Councilman Hood. And many of you have done things, I don't want to discount things you've done, but she almost quit. She's one of my best principals, and she said, I just can't take the negativity. So at some point, we have to decide to highlight the children who are doing well. We have a phenomenal internship program. We brag about that internship program all over the state, but nobody wants to talk about that. We brag about our children's successes, nobody wants to talk about that. So I say that if we want to keep good people, we've got to show some positivity behind their work and support them. We need our parents in the schools supporting our teachers, because it's not just a teacher's job to educate children. So we need our parents in those schools supporting our teachers. But I can tell you, having come from Winston-Salem Forsyth, they are all the way, let's get behind here, let's push kids, let's push adults. But the principals and teachers need our support. So that would be where I would ask. And we continue to work with Parks and Rec on activities for children. But I have in your folder our five-year strategic plan, our three-year corrective action plan, our school climate scores tell you a little bit about how our teachers, who may not speak up, are feeling. It tells you a little bit about our schools, and I also have a breakdown of Capitol. But I can tell you negativity will drive good people away, because there's no shortage of jobs for principals and school leaders. We want to keep them. Thank you so much.
Councilman, Dr. Miller, you through?
Oh, just that the negativity, you know, 10 years ago, that was, the whole city was negative. And now, you know, we've been able to turn that around. So we can turn this around.
We're going to turn it around.
Councilman Saunders.
I think, Mr. Mayor, you said everything that I wanted to say when Dr. Miller and I met with the representatives and before we were replaced, but I didn't get an opportunity to do that. And I want to thank you for saying that. Now, in terms of consistency, and Mr. Vogler just said it, 10 years, five superintendent's, average two years here, there's no consistency there. In terms of education, people talk about our demographics, okay? Which bothers me in the sense of high poverty, high crime, single households, and all that kinds of stuff. While the numbers may be true, that does not mean that our children can't learn. We have some wonderful children who are living in poverty, based on demographics. We have students who graduated and gotten a million dollars in scholarships. So we have great kids here, great students here. And I don't buy it when anybody says that education is not our number one priority, because it is. In 10 years, asking all these questions, these consistencies, putting all of the taxpayers' money into this, because the school board cannot fund itself, only council can do that. And my question is, how can we best work together? As we speak tonight, I don't know the last time that the council and school board met as a body. I don't have a clue the last time the nine of us and the seven of them sat down and talked about improvement. The question is, what can council do to help with the improvement? You have two elected bodies, two elected bodies, only one body can appropriate funds. And this city council appropriates more than twice what the state recommend that we put into our school system. I think that is really, really good, speaks well of our council. But in my view, communication has to improve. It just has to improve. You know, Maslow theory hierarchy needs, you know, the eight basic needs in life. The most important one is people need to be listened to. And oftentimes, when people listen to them, people see for themselves how they can improve. So yeah, we do have some issues we must address. Of the 100 and some schools in the state, I understand that we are the lowest, okay? We, meaning Danville. But Danville's government, the nine of us say and do, and what is done in our city reflect on the nine of us. In my view, that's why it is important that we meet with other bodies who are making major decisions, such as the schools and other. And we have to ask the tough question. It doesn't mean that we are arrogant, because we do that. We must ask the tough question. My last question would have been, before Dr. Miller and I were replaced, my last question was going to be, what can we do together? Together, no pointing fingers, review the past to improve the future. And there's so much history and so much data in that past. I kept asking for a plan, so we could come together. And every 12 months, we would not have to debate and worry and argue about, how much money you're going to get. You will know, because we talked about that. But that conversation didn't come up either. But I thank you for what you just said, and Mr. Vogler, and Vice Miller and others. But in terms of this school system here, I support our students. I don't know the number, at one time it was 4,000, something else, about 5,000, low 5,000 students, okay? And where they live, there's zip code, their address does not determine whether they can learn or not, because they can. I know, because I am still learning. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, for putting it out there. Thank you very much.
Before you, before you turn it back over, Ms. Dr. Harrison, Councilman Saunders and I attended an event with the senator on Friday. Could you elaborate to everyone that's listening, what he said that is going all over the country about the partnerships in Danville and Pennsylvania County? Will you do that for me?
I move around the state like a lot of people do. And people are talking about Danville, how Danville is really, is going to the Renaissance, coming out of it, quite frankly. We were the lowest in the state in terms of development, education, and other housing, you name it. But Danville has turned around. The population is growing, because people are working together, because people are listening. We hear that, I hear that all the time, from our two senators in Washington. I hear it from our governors, okay, about Danville being an example of all that, because the city council worked very closely together. I'm very proud of this council. I have my active city clerk to provide me any data, but my guess is at least 90% of all the votes on this council would be nine and zero. Because we meet in work session, and we have a tough conversation, very tough conversation. Recognizing that we're representing 47,000 people, we come together. And when we come in here, the problem is pretty much solved. And when people come and speak before us, we listen. But people looking at Danville now as a model citywide, okay? And when you said, Mr. Mayor, at that retreat, that education should be our number one priority, and all nine council members agreed with you. And for me, it still is our priority. But I'm hearing so many good things about our city, how we have turned things around. And I still believe this issue regarding the school system in the city of Danville can be fixed, okay? It can be. But we got to do this together. We got to do it together, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Dr. Harrison, I'm going to let you go, but Councilman Vogler, I'm going to ask you to say one more thing that you said earlier about hail or high water, we're going to make this work.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yeah. Protocol be damned. We're ready to help, and we're ready to roll. We're ready to do whatever we got to do.
Thank you. Dr. Harrison, thank you so much. Councilman Woodle.
Sherman, is this, is this a comprehensive report that you were sort of looking for?
Dr. Harrison, could you tell us exactly what that is? Councilman Woodle just held up something. His question was the Councilman.
Strategic plan for '21 through '26, is that in the ballpark of what you were looking for as a plan?
Councilman Saunders was asking for a five-year plan. What you presented to us today was a 2021-2026 strategic plan for the next, what, seven years?
Before I came in the district, I was contacted, or I contacted DRF to fund a strategic plan, and Clark has still graciously provided the funds. We spent about four months developing a strategic plan involving our community with a scorecard. And that plan was published and has been out in the community. So it's a five-year strategic plan that we rolled out as soon as I arrived.
Thank, well, Dr. Harrison, thank you so much. Anything else, Mattis?
Just wanted to say that I was in a meeting with you previously, and of course, there's a lot of blowback out there and a lot of noise, as far as I'm concerned, that, that I feel like is, if it hasn't been, it's going to be addressed. And that just some of the statistics that you showed me, I asked you, I said, well, why don't you show these? And you said, well, we just got to wait until September, which I thought was...
Turn your mic back on, your mic just went off.
I think it's going to be good for the school system. Thank you.
Councilman Hood.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that as we, as a new kid on the block that came to that retreat, that was a part of that, that was my first retreat, to hear everybody definitely focus on education first was beyond intriguing. So as I listened to my colleagues, as, again, as a new kid on the block, to be able to observe everything that was said and listen to the passionate way that each one of them spoke about putting education first, that's what I was. It's a saying that always goes, it says, women lie, men lie, but numbers don't. We understand the numbers now. So we pull layers back. So I'm very optimistic of us joining forces and being able to progress together and put in support. I remember in February, I spoke at GW three times to three different classes in February, and I came right back, and I came in these chambers and spoke of, and spoke as highly as I could of those students, because I witnessed it. I witnessed it. So I do want to continue to echo on what's good, that's being out there. But I see with our plans and moving forward, and the passion that each council member has to join forces and help you all, we are definitely there. So I'm excited for it. I see it. I like to think I'm a visionary, but I also see exactly moving forward and progressing with this, and we'll come back in due time and say, look at what change we had, and what change was made, so.
Councilman Buckner.
Dr. Harrison, thank you. There's a lot that's been said, most of the questions and things I had for you have already been answered. One thing that you've heard from every single council member on here, and I hope you can take it back to your board, we are fully 100% dedicated to the education of our children in the city of Danville, and moving the Danville Public School System forward by any means necessary. So please, 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 use us. We're here for you, we're here for your school board members, we're here for your teachers, we're here for your principals, and most importantly, the nine of us are here for our students and our children.
Thank you. Dr. Harrison, thank you so much for your presentation tonight. Communication from visitors, citizens desire to speak on matters not listed on agenda will be heard at this time. Citizens desire to speak on agenda items will be heard when the agenda item is presented. Anyone who would like to speak on any item listed on agenda may come forward at this time. Please state your name and address for the record. You can come on, you can come forward. You can come on, you can come forward. You can just take that microphone to the side if you want to get on the other side of him. Introduce yourself while he's doing that.
Hi, yes, I'm Sean Barker, and I'm speaking on behalf of Save the Vax Movement. I live at 312 Marshall Terrace. Can we start with 10 minutes tonight so I don't have to be interrupted?
Who's with you? Stand up, please. You want to introduce her?
Save the Vax Movement, yes, this is our secretary.
That's fine. You may have a seat. Sure.
All right. I want to talk to you all today about the relationship between health care, medical experimentation, and social justice. I'm a very good and authoritative spokesperson for this topic, as I previously worked in health care for a decade, and as I majored in Black Studies and minored in Women's Studies at William &amp; Mary. So I've had ample time and access to resources to reflect deeply on this topic. America's dirty little secret is our eugenics movement and the shocking degree of systemic protection that it has received throughout our history. In 1961, Fannie Lou Hamer, the iconic civil rights activist, was sterilized against her will by a white doctor in her home state of Mississippi via hysterectomy. Historian Gloria J. Brown Marshall points out that, at the time, the white landowner for whom Hamer worked as a sharecropper had more rights to her own body than she did, and likely ordered the sterilization to prevent Hamer from being distracted from her work duties by the responsibilities of raising a family. Hamer was deeply traumatized by this her entire life, as she always wanted kids. Here in Virginia, forced sterilization was legal and practiced widely from 1924 to 1972. The U.S. Supreme Court specifically upheld Virginia's sterilization law in the infamous case of Buck versus Bell. The decision upheld the right of the Virginia colony for the epileptic and feeble-minded to sterilized, impoverished patient Carrie Buck after she had a child outside of wedlock, and was spearheaded by Justice Oliver Wendell Holmes. Holmes commented, quote, "Three generations of imbeciles are enough," end quote, and concluded in the ruling that, quote, "It is better for all the world if, instead of waiting to execute degenerate offspring for crime, or to let them starve for their imbecility. Society can prevent those who are manifestly unfit from continuing their kind," end quote. Buck's whiteness meant that she at least had to be found to be feeble-minded via what passed for cognitive testing at the time. However, for Black and Latina women, no such measures were typically necessary, as they were legally presumed to be inferior. More than 7,500 individuals were sterilized here in our very state, many of them just an hour up the road from here in Lynchburg during that time period. The first study in the packet tonight is by GAT et al., reveals that the Pfizer vaccine significantly reduces semen concentration and sperm motility for at least three months following inoculation for males. Anthony Fauci has indicated the desire to see Americans take two COVID boosters per year. If this is the case, then males who follow the vaccine schedule would effectively be infertile for at least half of the year. Of course, we don't have data yet on how long-term exposure to repeated doses may impact the durability of the fertility-reducing effects. To find evidence that the COVID vaccines affect female fertility and/or the viability of pregnancies, we need look no further than Pfizer's own internal data. Attorneys Julie Pianta Dossi and Patricia Doherty wrote a letter on July 9th to Massachusetts Attorney General Maura Healey, urging her to notify the public of the risks to pregnant women who take the COVID vaccine. The full text is contained within your packet, but here is a quote to highlight the crux of their concern. Quote, "Interestingly, there are no reported outcomes for 238 of these 270 reported pregnancies. However, the data on the 36 babies' outcome is dire. Of the 28 cases reported, 25 of the babies died before birth and three at birth. Consequently, 28 out of the 36 babies with known outcomes died at or before birth, resulting in a 78% mortality rate. Also, the missing 238 pregnancy outcomes beg the question, why did Pfizer fail to provide the data on these cases?" End quote. And you may be asking yourself, how do we have access to Pfizer's internal data? And why have I not heard about this yet? Well, we have the data because a nonprofit called Public Health and Medical Professionals for Transparency sued the FDA to get it, and after the FDA failed to comply with the FOIA request that they submitted last year. The FDA and Pfizer fought very hard to prevent this data from reaching public view. At one point, they moved to attempt to keep their science concealed until 2096, long enough for all the guilty to die, I guess. However, truth and justice prevailed in this case. U.S. District Judge Mark Pittman of Fort Worth, Texas, reasoned that the public interest requires transparency in this case, given the critical importance of the pandemic, the government's response to it, and the safety of vaccines despite their expedited timetable. He ruled that the FDA must release all of the 450,000 pages of data before the end of the year. And we are currently receiving monthly document drops in batches of 80,000 per month. Select filings and rulings from the Public Health and Medical Professionals for Transparency versus FDA case have been included within your packet. World-renowned cardiologist and internist Dr. Peter McCullough has been following the release of these internal Pfizer documents since they began in December of 2021. He wrote a piece for his professional blog titled "One mRNA, One Spike Protein, 1,291 Diseases and Unlimited Ways to Die," published March of this year. The article is included within your packet in its entirety, but here is a quick quote. Quote, "We have learned from the first sets of documents released by Pfizer to the public on the Pfizer-BioNTech vaccine that, in the first 90 days of public use, the sponsor received 1,223, reports on 1,223 deaths, and did not report this to the public or pull the product off the market in a voluntary recall, which is prudent and customary for this type of an unexpected death rate. To make matters worse, Pfizer cataloged 1,291 unique adverse events of special interest, with an entire range of diseases that fall into the categories of neurological, cardiovascular, immunologic, and hematologic. Additional concerning areas include fetal loss in childbearing women who take one of the vaccines, and the emergence of either de novo or accelerated cancers." End quote. In other words, gentlemen, the smoking gun has already been released and is quickly circulating the world over. The jig is up. It is not a question as to whether or not these things are dangerous. It is undeniable as well that both the Pfizer and the FDA knew that they were dangerous. Only a few things remain to be seen here, such as, when will the corporate media choose morality over their addiction to Big Pharma ad dollars and warn the public of these dangers? And when will policymakers at all levels of government simply own their mistakes and work as best and as quickly as possible to mitigate the damage? Save the Vax Movement is a group of healers with an internal culture focused on healing. As such, we believe in forgiveness. We believe in clemency for those who are manipulated into supporting these dangerous drugs. We believe in humanizing everyone involved in this so that we can work together as allies to prevent the worst outcomes for as many of our fellow citizens as possible. And as always, I am more than happy to take any questions you all may have.
Councilman Saunders.
Good question.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to make sure that I am clear.
Sure.
With regards to the vaccine for COVID.
Yes.
Are you speaking in favor of it or against it?
I'm speaking against it. We would like to see them banned worldwide, county by county.
So you don't think the COVID vaccine-
Sue. Stop the clock. I was getting sued to stop the clock.
Oh.
I'm sorry, Mr. Saunders, what did you say?
You don't think the COVID vaccine to stop or prevent it works?
I think that Pfizer doesn't think that they work. You know, another thing that's been revealed inside of their own internal data drops through this FOIA case that we've talked about tonight.
So I take that, I take that to mean that you don't think the vaccine is worthy of being taken for COVID? That's what I take it.
I don't think that it prevents transmission, and I don't think that it provides any value whatsoever.
Is that a yes or no?
These are dangerous. They don't, they don't help-
Is that a yes or no? And I apologize for-
No, they don't help COVID in any way.
Thank you. Didn't mean to push you. I just needed more yes or no.
No, you're fine. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You. Anyone else? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
We still, anyone else desire to speak on any item listed on agenda may come forward at this time. Mr. Lovelace, Reverend, good afternoon, good evening, and welcome to the council.
Good afternoon, distinguished gentlemen. I kinda hate it raining on you for a raid.
Well, give us your name and address before you start the rain on the parade.
Reverend George H. Lovelace, citizen of Danville, Virginia. I kinda hate that rain on your parade. Well, let's sit here and listen to you all talk about how good the schools is and how good the schools is doing. Our school system sucks, if you want to know the truth about it. I sat this year, I sit and watch and tried to help students. I know students couldn't pass the SOL, but the school system said, don't worry about it, they gonna pass. I know some students that's reading on the first and second grade level, but yet and still, they in the fifth and sixth grade. You talk about helping our students. I've seen, you know, the beautiful track that we got, y'all gonna build. It's awesome. The virtual school, it's awesome. I hear you all say that I'm behind the school, I'm gonna support the school. But what are you doing to help those teachers that's teaching 10th grade students that's reading on a second grade level? How much you allocated money to be, nice roof, nice virtual school, nice building, but how much money have you all allocated to help those teachers? To help those students that is reading on a second grade level in the eighth grade? If I was trying to teach somebody in the eighth grade that's reading on a second grade level, I quit too. And you ask us, why is this teacher quitting? Why do the teachers, why we're not getting more teachers? What are you doing to help them? You say you's behind the school, you say you behind the students, you say you want to support the students, but I haven't heard y'all say not one thing. Now, I don't hear too good now that I done got old. I don't hear too good, you know, now, but I didn't hear y'all say not one thing. I'm gonna allocate this for the help bring those students up that's reading on a second grade level and on a third grade level. I'm gonna bring them up to the level that they supposed to be on. I ain't hear y'all say none of that, not unless not a Mr. Boakes somewhere another. Y'all didn't say none of that. But you talk about how good everything is going, how great the schools is. It's good, all that's good. You know, remind, I sitting out thinking about y'all when y'all, when y'all were doing all that talking of a Bruce Lee movie. You know, he was trapped, some fighters were trapping across the water, and had one fighter, oh, he would had all those fancy moves, look good in those moves, and Bruce told him, say, you gonna get defeated. You know what he said? He said, I look good doing it. Is this what we want our students? We want them to just look good, so that they came from a good-looking school. If you want, if you talk about crime, you want to, you want to decrease crime? Better educate your students. Better educate your students. I know people that have graduated from high school and can't fill out a job application. But our school system graduated them. I know a student the school passed them and couldn't write their name. I talked to the parent, go back to that student, you tell that, and you tell that principal that, I don't want you to pass my, my daughter or my son. What are we doing? That's where your real problem is at. If you fix the root, fix the root, your tree will grow up stronger. It'll grow. It will grow stronger. So when are you gonna allocate some money to help them? To bring them up to level? Y'all guys need to do something. All this is a good speech is good, all, everybody talk cause they got to talk. It comes natural. But I didn't hear y'all say not one mumbling word about those students that was falling behind. I didn't hear y'all say a word about it.
Mr. Lovelace, your time is up. Before you go, I want to address some things with you, because you asked the question, what are we doing? And I refuse to let you walk away without sharing something with you. As a few minutes ago, as you were sitting there, and if you listen very carefully to what I said, in 2004, in 2004, let me go real slow so you can understand it.
Go real slow.
I want to make sure you listen, because you talked about, you talked about how all this speech that we are giving, I want to make sure you understand. In 2004, the citizens of this city had an appointed school board. Appointed. The citizens decided in two, the citizens of Danville, Virginia, decided in 2006, they wanted to go to an elected school board. You talked about all this speech and all this stuff that you're talking about, but I watched the school board meeting where the elected body that governs the school is, I didn't see you there.
True.
They have the same opportunities that we have here at council. Now, the persons that the citizens have elected to run the body, you were not there. This council meant everything it said tonight. It wasn't fluff. Hold my, I gave you your time, it wasn't fluff. And as Dr. Harrison stated, let me ask you, what are you planning on doing? We have all the person speaking negatively about our young people, it's about our youth. You asking the question about the young people who are, can't read, but you haven't been to the body, the elected body, which is the school board. You haven't been there, and you said you agree, but persons, as I stated before, come to city council, wanting city council to override the governing body that the city decided in 2006 that they wanted an elected school board. I say this out of love to you. Let's work together, Reverend. And what I suggest is, real calmly, is feel free to go to the school board, to that elected body, because this city council, because what the citizens decided to do in 2006, we can't override the, the school board, because that's who the citizen elected. And I thank you for being here. This has been a great time. I'll end with that. I'll see you, council, I'll end with that. I usually don't get into this, but you asked the question. No, no, your time is up and my time is up. But you asked the question, and that's why, as the mayor of this city, I felt it personal to answer your question. What are you all doing? We all stated that you heard tonight, we're gonna make it work. We're going to make it work. Now, what I suggest that you do is go to the school board meeting.
My next move.
That should have been your first move.
That's my next move.
That should have been your first move.
Well, I'm gonna start here and go on there too.
Because the elected body, the elected body that the citizens went to in 2006, in 2006, the citizens of this community, and I refuse to let anyone, because you heard every one of this council, we are serious about education, it's our number one priority, and we're going to work for the youth in this community. And if anyone wants to help us join on board, we know kids cannot read, we know the problems that we're having, and we know, because if you heard in my speech just a few minutes ago, you heard in my speech just a few minutes ago, I said that the morale in the school system has got to change, and we're gonna change it. Thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you. We're still in communications. Anyone else desire to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Anyone who wants to speak on any item that's not on the agenda may come forward at this time. Under consent agenda, I open the public hearing. Council, what's your pledge? Hold it. I open the public hearing. Anyone who wants to speak on any item that's on the agenda, consent agenda, may come forward at this time. Anyone who wants to speak on any item on the consent agenda may come forward at this time. I close the public hearing. Councilman Campbell.
Mr. Mayor, I move for accepting the consent agenda, B and C.
Second, my Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Under item A, consideration of authorizing the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Virginia to conduct hearings and trials at the James F. Ingram Justice Center. Council, what's your pleasure? Councilman Buckner.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution of the City Council of the City of Danville, Virginia, authorizing and approving a license agreement between the City of Danville and the United States District Court for the Western District of Virginia, Danville Division, to conduct hearings and trials in the James F. Ingram Justice Center.
Is there second? Second, my Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Mayor Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
I'll do them separate. Consideration of Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Project Application. Counsel, what's your pledge? Councilman Vogler.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the endorsing of a smart scale application by the city of Danville to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the proposed construction of Riverside Drive improvements from Ponty Forest Road to Audubon Drive.
Is there second? Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Maya Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo. Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Number two, Lee.
I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the endorsing of a smart scale application by the city of Danville to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the proposed construction of Riverside Drive improvements from Audubon Drive to Arnett Boulevard.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Maya Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo. Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Lead number three.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the endorsing of a smart scale application by the city of Danville to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the proposed construction of Riverside Drive improvements from Arnett Boulevard to Main Street.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Mayo. Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Maya Jones.
Aye. Lee.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the endorsing of a smart scale application by the city of Danville to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the proposed improvements along Ponty Forest Road from Noradan Drive to Beavers Mill Road.
Second by Councilman Whittle, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle. Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Maya Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo.
Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the endorsing of a smart scale application by the Danville Metropolitan Planning Organization to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the proposed construction of Piedmont Drive pedestrian accommodations.
Second by Councilman Buckner, discussion of the motion. Madam Clerk, if you would, call the roll, please.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Maya Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo. Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Back to you, Lee.
Yes, Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the endorsing of a smart scale application by the Danville Metropolitan Planning Organization to the Virginia Department of Transportation for the proposed construction of a connector road expansion at Berry Hill Megasite.
Second by Councilman Saunders, discussion of the motion. Councilman Saunders.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question. We just approve a lot of revelations regards to transportation in our city. My question is, do we have funds allocated already for all of these projects? Or is this just a procedural move that we have to make? And the money may come in over a 12 month, five year, whatever period of time. So is this just a formality? Have we, do we have money approved? Or this is to get money approved as become available?
That's correct. It is, these are applications applying for funding. So we currently have no funding for any of these projects.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Vogler.
Aye.
Mr. Whittle.
Aye.
Mr. Buckner.
Aye.
Reverend Campbell.
Aye.
Mr. Hood.
Aye.
Maya Jones.
Aye.
Mr. Mayo. Vice Mayor Miller.
Aye.
Mr. Saunders.
Aye.
Consideration of amending the fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation ordinance for a grant from the Department of Criminal Justice Services in amount of $150,000. Councilman Buckner.
May I like to make a motion. We approve an ordinance amending fiscal year 2023 budget appropriation ordinance by increasing revenue for the Department of Criminal Justice Service grant to support the project Imagine Sports Based Youth Development Program in the amount of $150,000. First reading.
Second by Councilman Miller, first reading. Communications, our city manager, once again, if you just tune in, he's in Harvard, but I guarantee he's watching. Deputy City Manager, anything? Thank you, sir. City Attorney, anything?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Bear.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk, anything? Roll call, please.
Mr. Whittle.
Thank you.
Mr. Buckner.
Yeah, real quick, I'd like to thank the Danville Police Department for the wonderful invitation that I received to be in attendance this morning for the passing of Bonnie Jones. They did a, there was a group that came from Washington State, Seattle, Washington, to Danville, Virginia, and they rode motorcycles the entire way. I'm sorry, Councilman Saunders, I was a little late texting you this morning to see if you want to ride over, but it was a very, very heartwarming and, and beautiful tribute to 608 fallen soldiers or officers, I'm sorry. 608 fallen officers in 2021. And just God bless everybody that was in attendance and God bless all the families, the 608 families of those officers. It was a very touching moment and I was very, very, very honored to be a part of it. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Reverend Campbell.
Yes, thank you so much. Tonight, I thought it was, Mr. Mayor, a very beautiful conversation about our schools and I think that every councilman here, we all agree that education is our top priority. And I feel that where we are, it's gonna take the entire community.
That's right.
We will have to come together. And I just want to reiterate some things I said last time. We have the Ace Academy and Hope Brotherhood that you will give us a report from the last two weeks where we are, and that's a beautiful program. Small beginning is for our early pre-K kids, third grade up. These are institutions that are already in place. Then we have the Statesfield Empowerment Apprenticeship Program. That's a wonderful program. Mr. Mayor and I, we ended today talking with DCC. And I cannot say enough about Kenny Lewis program that he's working on, six book summer reading program. They got thousands and thousands of books that we're asking our kids to read to keep our skills intact that we can have a very successful school year. These small things, we may say it's insignificant, but they can make a big difference in reference to when our school starts back up and keep them on track. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You want to say anything about the part, the event with the young people you attended last night?
Oh, Miss, Miss Cunningham, I hear the, and maybe Mr. Mayor, I was very impressed with the young ladies that were there. And I think that we are headed into the right direction. And I just hope that we could have more young people involved. In fact, I was asking if they could come here tonight, but some kind of way they got a little bit, you know, wary about that. But I was very impressed what we saw last night and involvement, our youth, and we'll, we'll make a difference in our educational process. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Hood.
Yes, to you, Mr. Campbell. We are in our third week of the Ace Academy and we are putting poetry in motion to utilize them as lyrics to build a song about Danville. That's the end, that's the end all tell all that we're doing at the end of that program. What I like about it is you're watching youth that are able to express themselves creatively. And some of them are speaking out loud that you could, that their parents already told me they would never speak in a group before that spoke out loud that they're doing that. Quick, I want to congratulate Kazel and Co. for their youth talk show. That was absolutely phenomenal and informative and we need to hear more of that. I absolutely support that, that whole movement. I get to see it from a, from an inside view of it and the work is amazing. Also tomorrow at OT Barna Middle School from four to seven, God's Final Calling warning, free food giveaway tomorrow. If you haven't seen one of these things put on before, it is absolutely amazing with the amount of items that they give away through the whole community. I went to the one at Gibson that I was blown away. He sent me pictures today of how much stuff they already have. And again, that's four o'clock. It's open to the public at OT Barna. Also DPS Parent and Student Community Engagement Event today. I had the opportunity to be there, pleasant view, and I had the opportunity to play a, a three on three with some teens today. And I, you know, I think I posted out that I, I did hit one shot. It seemed like I think I did, but maybe I didn't.
It's called age.
Right, right, right. But it was a, it was absolutely awesome to see students and parents engage and utilizing those resources there.
How do you, how do you feel right now?
Sore.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayo. Vice Mayor Miller.
Yeah, I don't think any member of this council is happy with our school system's performance over the past several years. That's what we keep saying. And it's not to lay any blame anywhere, but we're all want to work together to improve it. We know that it's important to have good facilities, but that's not the whole answer. But there are many programs going on. And Mr. Tyrell Payne of the school board will correct me, but the, the school board is aware of this and they've been working very hard to improve our children's education. We want all children to get a good education. Not just the top students, but all students. And no, it's for years. There's been children that, you know, get to the eighth grade and are reading at second grade level. And this is not unique to our system. My wife was a teacher for years and she would have kids in the fourth, fifth and sixth grade you know, or in the eight, going to the eighth grade that couldn't read, you know, and she was a reading special. So this is recognized. We're just saying that we, as the mayor said, we, we know there's a problem. We want to help with the problem. But the school board is, is at the forefront and we're there to help them. All of us work together. A shout out to a couple of people. Charlene Presley, she, a couple of weeks ago, there was a concert, the Community Market. These occur every Thursday during the summertime. And about three fourths, she was the coordinator of the, the event, works for the city. And, you know, everyday employee of the city. And suddenly there was an emergency in the lady's bathroom. And she rapidly took charge of that, helped the lady who'd, who'd fallen and hit her head and failed to, gotten dizzy, failed to eat. You know, diabetic who don't eat, didn't eat supper. But anyway, and she sort of marshaled the, the people to come and, and help this woman. It was just going above and beyond the call of her duty as a, as a Parks and Rec person. You just got so many good people that work for the city who just bend over backwards to help you. And also today, if you saw on the front page, a local boy made good, Joe Manaply, relief pitcher for the Arizona Diamondbacks, made the All-Star team. You know, he used to pitch, pitch here at Tunstall. I knew his dad well. His dad called on me as a pharmaceutical representative for years and Joe played on the, my daughter played on the travel soccer team with Joe. And it just makes you feel good to see how, how he's made good, you know, making the All-Star team. Earlier this summer, the Diamondbacks were playing the Nationals and my daughter and son-in-law live, live in DC. So my son-in-law, who didn't know Joe, I said, well, you might look him up. He might speak at you or so. You know, he, he went up and said hi and Joe started a conversation, you know, got his picture made with my son-in-law. He's a big baseball fan. And, you know, he's, you know, some, some major league players and some pro athletes, you know, they're sort of uppity, you know. They don't realize they wouldn't be there except for the fans. And Joe is not that way. He's a good kid. And he, good kid from this area and made good. So get a chance, watch the All-Star game.
Thank you.
Mr. Saunders.
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Every two years, people have the opportunity to serve on Danville School Board by, as it is an elected body. And that is a very, very important job. And we thank all those who have served, are serving, and will serve. I also like to ask all citizens to please say encouraging words to our students and our teachers. Please be very, very encouraging and supportive of them. Education, and I want to thank you, Mr. Whittle, for the question you raised about, about the school plan. And again, as Mr. Vogler said, 10 years, five superintendent, consistency, you know, is very important. The city council and the school board working together is very important. To be a little redundant, I can't recall the last time this body, a city council or the school board, met jointly. And not to be unkind, but to be honest. The school board has a right to make their decision as their bylaws and, and powers are given to them. But when I learn about our new superintendent, and God knows, I wish her well. I wish her well. When I knew as a council member who I knew superintendent was, I was at home drinking coffee, reading that newspaper. Didn't even know who the candidates were, nothing. So, you know, we, we need to work, I think, very closely together. I, I do want to say again, we have some great students. They are our present and our future. Economic development is thriving in our city. We're going to continue to need workers trained, educated to take these jobs. So please stay in school, learn all you can. And again, everyone, please, let's say encouraging words to our students, to our teachers, school board members, and everyone involved with moving our city forward. And finally, Mr. Mayor, as always, sir, great leadership tonight. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Yeah, first, let me just say thank you, Mayor, for tonight's meeting. I began the night with a prayer and, and I'm gonna try to stay with a consistent theme throughout this meeting, focusing on our young people. My prayer talked about our young people. Earlier tonight, we all talked about our young people. In my closing comments tonight, in some kind of way, each thing I'm gonna mention is about our young people. We often get asked a lot, what are things for our young people to, to do here in the city? And, and I don't have the time tonight to go through a list of all of them, but there are some things I can touch on quickly that are free. And, and I want to, to let folks know and remind folks that they exist. Where Value City used to be and down on the other end, the Plaza Cinema, that shopping center, there's a church there, Dan River Church. They have a free indoor playground that anybody can go to any day of the week. And it is there, available, free. And you don't have to be a member of the church to go in there. They let anybody come in there. Free indoor playground at that church. Parks and Rec, they do a number of programs throughout the year. They do a bunch of free programs at the Ruby Archie Library. My kids have gone to several of them this summer and, and some of them have been very well attended. But I think there's a lot of people don't realize they have. And it's not just go in and read a book. There are all kinds of programs that they're doing at the library about science and technology and fun stuff for the kids. My kids can't wait until the next one that they go to. And they're free at the library. Lastly, I want to remind folks, I said I was gonna do it every meeting until the, the deadline had passed. Youth football and youth cheerleading signups are going on right now. And I would encourage anyone with, with a, a young child out there with the, within the various age groups. They got different leagues, different levels. Sign your child up either for the cheerleading or for the football. It will be a great experience for them and that's through Danville Parks and Rec. If you go to playdanvilleva.com, you can find out a lot of the information, all this stuff I touched on tonight. And lastly, I'll just say again, this city council is ready to get in the trenches to help our schools. Protocol be damned, we are going to get this right, whatever it takes. Thank you.
Thank you. Lee, Lee mentioned his prayer tonight. I was gonna mention that in my closing. But when you're praying for the young people, it was a very fervent and effective prayer. I want to thank you for that. Today, and I, we had a graduation for our police officer, entry level law enforcement. And it was, we had actually more candidates graduate, nine. So I want to say congratulations to all of those candidates, our new police officers. Congratu- make sure you congratulate them for me, will you? Tyrell Payne, stand up. Stand up. As Councilman Saunders and others stated, we appreciate the work that you're doing. We really do appreciate the work. We know it's tough. I know oftentimes you, you and I talk almost every day. I know it's not easy. The superintendent said something that really touched me this evening and we talked about the negativity. And she talked about, I don't know if many of us listened to what she said in regards to the principal who wanted to give up. That negativity will absorb you. And we want you to be encouraged. Every council member here wants you to be encouraged. And we thank you for what you're doing for our students in our community. Thank you, Tyrell. Thank you. Let's give my hand, please. Last night, you heard about the youth that Kazel had. You heard from Brian and you heard from Larry. I want to just ditto Casey and Kelly. I was at the fashion house. You all have been very active in this community with skates. What you do at GLH Johnson, what you do with the fashion, with the young people. This is what we're talking about. You all are not only involved, but a lot of people are talking. And I know you two especially also get discouraged because people in the background talk about what needs to be done, what's not be done, but you all are involved. I can't thank you all enough as mayor and city council members, how you involved. We appreciate it. Those young people last night, the parents, and to see everything that they're saying. So thank you so much for what you're doing in our community. Earl, I'm asking you, when I presented to council a while back, when you and Ken could have a discussion. Lee and several of us talked about a youth council and we had a youth council. It was a great youth council. I want to bring it back. I want you all to have a conversation, you and Ken and others. And I want to get some more partners involved with that youth council. I want that youth council to grow like it never has before. We've already laid the foundation. And Dr. Millie, I think every council member, Madison and Larry have came out